I'm just trying to figure out which day it was sent, so I can find it here.
It's ready with me on.
There we go. Okay. Is it quiet? I'm ready. Okay, let's call the board of, or the planning commission to order. And the minutes, has everyone had a chance to read the minutes?
I think we should approve the notes as printed.
And weren't we supposed to say our name? Did you want her name said when we?
Oh, we're supposed to all up our hand?
That's for voting.
Just for voting?
It helps if you, because she's trying to write. Is there a second?
Second.
Jerry. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Okay. And the addendum to the gravel pit. You want to take this, Tim? Niva?
Yes, thanks, Madam Chair. This is just a really brief addendum to the gravel pit summary report that I gave you back in January. The Humphrey pit just had, I had misinterpreted some of the data that they had supplied. So what's in this addendum is the corrected version of that amount of material that was hauled out. Shorter township has entirely restored or is entirely undisturbed, so I'll visit that site this summer to confirm that. And then the Isaac Hansen pit that you guys approved last year. I didn't have that in my initial report because I just started in this position and I just copied the ones that they had done the year before. So that slipped under my radar. So that is included here. The amount of material that was hauled out in this addendum report is just for the expansion area that's permitted. This is an expansion off of a grandfathered pit, as you're aware of, so I didn't include the information from the grandfathered pit. So that is, that's it for this addendum.
Okay.
Do we need a motion to approve this?
Tim?
Madam Chair, it, this was a, is an annual review. Part of that review had already been taken to the commissioners. As this is an addendum to that, it would be appropriate to go ahead and make a motion to accept the addendum. And then it'll be forwarded on to the commissioners and.
I, I'll make a motion to approve the addendum.
Is there a second?
All second.
Adam? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Okay, new business. Frickman IUP. Niva?
Your. Thanks, Madam Chair. All right, so this request before you is a 10-year interim use permit to operate a home business in the FAR3 zone district on property adjacent to Cook County Road number 44. The Frickman property includes 80 acres and has access from the terminus of County Road 44. Property is entirely within the FAR3 zoning district. Home businesses are identified as a conditional use permit in this zoning district. Land Services has found no issues during the annual reviews that have been conducted since the initial interim use permit was issued in 2018. The applicant's request for this interim use permit is to operate their business. Be granted an increase in availability to four days per week with three evening events per operating season. The applicants are requesting to have their gallery open from Thursday through Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. or by appointment from Memorial Day weekend through the 10-day fall studio tour. In addition, they would like to host two to three evening events during their operating season. The applicants identify a drop in visitor use as an indicator that they need more flexibility to operate their home business. In 2018, it came to Land Services' attention that the Frickmans had begun advertising their art gallery. Once notified that a CUP would be required, advertising ceased and the owners began the CUP process. The Frickmans received an interim use permit in July 2018. The IUP allowed an establishment of a home business in the FAR3 zone district. The home business hosts a small retail art gallery, which exhibits the Frickmans' art in addition to six to eight additional regional artists. The additional draw to the art gallery is the opportunity for the Frickmans to show their work areas to prospective clients to see how the art is made. Several conditions are placed on the original IUP approval. The 2018 IUP resolution with the original conditions of approval is included with your packets. I made a table on page two, which summarizes the annual reviews, which have been conducted since 2018. During each of those annual reviews, my predecessor, Bill Lane, found no issues with the operation of the permit. Visitor vehicle data suggests there's been a reduced business traffic since COVID-19. The property is located in a sparsely populated area at the end of County Road 44. During the summer, the parking area can host eight vehicles, although the applicant has stated that they never had that many visitors simultaneously. I included an addendum to your packets on Monday. I hope you all got them with all of the summaries kind of summarized, all the comments summarized. With that, I would like to quickly give a really brief summary to that. So from our comments, we had three in support and four opposed. One of the opposed was specifically opposed to expansion, but said that Thursdays were okay. I'm sure you've had time to read all of these comments. I did want to make one note that there's some misstatements in the comments that this isn't an increase in the hours. There's a few different comments that were stating that this was an increase in the hours of the operation. 10 to 5 was what the 2018 IUP was approved for, and that's what this application is for also. So primarily, it's those days, the Thursday through Sunday, as well as the few evening events. It's kind of the biggest things. I did reach out to Robbie Haas, the highway engineer, to ask about his evaluation of the County Road 44 road use. And he did not find that this use, I kind of cited that table of the annual visitor log. He didn't think that that was going to have any profound impact on the road. And I included a couple of proposed conditions that could mitigate the sound issues for the neighbors to the north. That might be a sound barrier fence from the parking area, something that can muffle the car alarms and the car doors closing. So I encourage you to explore that, see if that might be something that might mitigate those impacts to the neighboring properties. In addition, I did point out that we've had other conditional use permits where we're worried about noises, where the condition of approval could state that we're meeting Minnesota state law noise standards, 7030. That's kind of a standardized way to make sure that the property is meeting state noise standards that anybody that privately owns the property could go up to those noise standards as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. I know that there was a lot of information here.
Okay. Is someone here representing the Frickmans? Would you care to come to the microphone?
Yes.
And you can add anything you'd like in addition to what Mrs. Maxwell has stated?
I think in general, it's a good summary, and thank you for all the work you've put into that. Just a detail about the sound barrier issue, if it maybe ought to be addressed again. But both our neighbors to the north and us have planted quite a bit of trees and stuff over the years already to try to increase irrespective of us having a gallery there. Just to, so they're growing. So that was just a stray remark, but. And I had some remarks to make about the letters, you know, some of the issues that were raised. I don't know if I should do that right now, or I don't, I'm not. I just saw your protocol for order of doing things, and it was new to me. I had a. So I don't know how you want me to present.
We'll have you present what you would like to include in the information, and then we'll open it to the public comment.
Well, I just, what we did is we did look at the letters that came. And so I addressed some issues that came up. There obviously is a difference of opinion among different people in the neighborhood. So in the first place, there.
Can you scoot closer?
Oh, sure.
We're having trouble hearing. There you go.
Does that sound better?
Yeah.
The. So the first thing I had to say was that we do understand, some people seem to think, you know, it doesn't fit in the FAR3 zoning. We understand our gallery may be outside the standard zoning criteria, and that is why we applied for an IUP. The issues, numbers of visitors and road conditions. As we stated in our application, in 2021, we had 63 visitors in 23, in 28 vehicles prior to the Art along the Lake tour. This amounts to an average of 3.5 visitors in 1.5 vehicles per weekend. And I note in passing that our summer schedule, which is the, the business where we're asking for more days, is typically very slow. It's only the big fall tour where we're very busy. So the impact for adding a day or two onto our current two days is probably pretty slim. Some weekends, we have nobody. Anyway, last week in the News Herald, Jim Boyd said that the last two years have shown record business in Cook County. Business owners reported being busier and staying busier after an initial three-to-four-month slump at the beginning of COVID, which is relevant in the sense of people saying that our numbers have been down with COVID. And they expect they're going to go, some people feel they're going to go up again. That's our remark on that. And then I have a letter that our friend sent, and it's in the pack, but I wanted to read it because it seems especially important to us. The road issues being, and the volume of people being important. The Frickmans have previously had a, this was Brian Hansel. The Frickmans have previously had a similar permit, and over the time of the previous permit, they met all the criteria. I see no reason to prevent another from being issued. Our original concern with the original permit was increased traffic and danger to the kids that play in the area. I believe sign requirements were added into the permit. Two signs were added to the road, labeling the road as no outlet and asking people to drive slow. Due to the sign, we actually have less traffic going past our house than before the Frickmans had their permit issued. It's a big improvement. The only vehicles that we noticed going fast now belong to the residents that live further up County Road 44. Prior to the signs, lots of people meaning to go to Pike Lake would accidentally drive up County Road 44. It was so bad, one of the local residents added a handmade sign to this stop sign at the south side of County Road 45, pointing the direction to Pike Lake Road. The new signs fixed the problem, and it wouldn't have happened without the Frickmans' original permit request. We support the issuing of a new permit. So continuing with bulleted items in response to other letters. So the road conditions have been addressed in the attached letter from engineer Robert Haas. The phrase "by appointment" refers to people visiting, say, commissioned pieces or, for example, a small art colony class that can only visit at a set time. There seemed to be some concern about what we meant by, by commission, you know, by appointment. These are rare, but we are trying to be transparent as we can. Evening events was a concern. We are more than happy to notify neighbors when those might be. And they're typically not big events. What would happen, it'd be like a wine and cheese get together in a gallery, maybe meet the artists and that are exhibiting there. There was a concern about our mentioning the sculpture garden, which was felt to be an added threat or weight. And our sculpture garden has been at the south entrance to our studio and if, and not in, not visible to the neighbors. It's been there. We have always advertised it, and in fact, the original structure was built prior to the gallery. We also have had a landscape business and making gardens is one of our passions. So this is our own little garden. As I said, it's not visible unless you come right up into the area. So. I think that's, those are the remarks that I have to try to clarify a little bit.
Okay, well, we'll open it to the public. So we'll have you go back to your seat. Is there someone who would like to speak from the public? Come to the microphone, state your name. No one wants to speak in the public comment?
Is this for or against?
Either way.
Either one. How do you hear me? I'm going to read this. Your name, please.
My, my name is Myra Timer, 308 County Road 44.
And I'm Mike Scholmaszki.
Same address. Thank you.
We chose to complete our homewoman's property, which is at the end of a dead-end road for the very reason of solitude, and to immerse ourselves in nature. This is our place to escape from the tourism and craziness of Grand Marais. Our property is adjacent to the Frickmans', and our front yard looks directly down onto their property because we share a field. We feel granting Sharon and Steve's request is beyond the scope of FAR3. It would include many other artists. It does include many other artists. It would double the days to four per week and include the whole weekend. It would allow extra hours by appointment. It would add two to three additional evening gatherings, and it would allow this use for 10 years. We feel the Frickmans' business has gone from their own personal studio gallery to a commercial operation representing multiple artists. We feel it doesn't live up to the spirit of a home business, especially when they are highlighting so many other artists. This means we could see and hear visitors every single weekend for five months. It gives us very little relief from summer tourism. We have no idea what "by appointment" means. It's very vague and open-ended. The Frickmans don't appear to have built with retail in mind. However, they indicated in their permit request that they were continually asked to expand. They didn't have to say yes. They chose to say yes and expand, and now want to cover their expenses. We wonder why one family's financial needs have priority over the rural character for the neighbors and why we have to give up two more days per week of privacy. We are not asking to shut it down, just not to expand it, even though we feel strongly that it has turned into a commercial venture and could very well increase. We have exhausted our ability to mitigate impacts of their business due to the location of our home and the terrain. The monitoring in the past two years is not a good indicator of what is yet to come with this expansion. We feel like we're starting over again and could see big changes. We ask that you continue the same monitoring as in the original permit. Monitoring the impact is vital to help the planning and zoning board ensure the FAR3 zone does not lose its integrity and meaning. We beg of you to deny the additional days and evenings and the option to offer appointments. We also urge you to reevaluate this permit in three years instead of 10. And most importantly, please keep this request as non-transferable. We definitely feel the permit should be terminated upon sale or transfer of property. Thank you for letting us comment.
You just touched that mark. Is there anyone else that wishes to comment? Okay, we'll close it to the public, the public hearing. The commissioners, planning commissioners, what's your thoughts? Keith?
I, I've visited before the COVID years, one studio tour there, so I'm very familiar with it. And I've known both parties for years. And I could see, I can see both viewpoints here. Because when the parties originally bought the property, Sharon and Mike bought a whole old homestead and then, and their original intent, you know, there's a lot of couples, was that was going to be their homestead. Well, their life changed and, you know, they went in different directions, and then the property got divided. And unfortunately, the Scholmaszki property does sit up at a higher elevation. It looks right down on where Sharon and Steve's gallery and home are. That being said, you know, all, a conditional use permit, I think, is, is you try to balance the interests with what are permitted uses. And it's clearly a permitted use in the zone, a home occupation. I think the 10-year timeframe is too long. I think that could be shortened. And then in the next, I would say, go back to the three-year. And then we can see how the three years post-COVID pans out on traffic and revisit it again. And if there are no more, if there are no, no issues, then, then, you know, that's fine. The one other issue I think that could address the concerns for some quiet and privacy is that there'd be no, no outside events in these evening events, that they take place. Something like the marriage venue thing where we said there could be no outside music. In this case, that any outside events had to be, there would, there would be no outside events on these evening events. They would have to be within the studio itself. And that could mitigate, you know, some of the, some of the effects. So I guess I'm inclined to support it with some little bit different conditions at this point. We could talk about this more when we get ready.
Let's see what everyone else is thinking.
Sure.
How about you guys, thoughts?
I think 10 years. I support most of this, but there's a few changes I'd like to see, too. And I agree with Keith, it should be a three-year or four-year. And then see what happens with that. And I also agree with, all business should be conducted inside, no, like, outside stuff.
Okay. Jerry, how about you?
Pretty much on that same line. I'm not going to add anything more.
Okay.
I'm pretty much on the same, same line of thinking. My one additional thought, other than what's been said, is, is Sunday necessary? To me, Sunday in a residential neighborhood maybe is, is something that we could.
Can you hear me now, or should I get to the microphone?
We can hear.
I would say that we would be willing to give up Sunday, and if it isn't sound to, you know, trade for a little length. Having more, having the 10 years, or at least something more than three years, gives us an ability to plan, to invest money in advertising. If we don't know we're going to survive the cut, it's like, how do we invest and build our business? So it's a, that's a difficult, I mean, we don't mind getting, keeping track and getting measured, but if we can be approved for a longer period of times, unless, unless, you know, we're. Does that make sense?
Could it be reviewed in three years, but have the permit last longer? So that if there's an issue in three years, then we do what we need to for the permit.
Do you want to answer, Judy, or? I mean, I think I could address that. I mean, it basically would be a review. We have gravel pit reviews that are periodic. We have other CUPs that are periodic, and we have, so the three-year horizon is, you know, for, for the people's use of an RV on their property, we typically use like a three-year timeframe. I guess the one other issue, as long as we're here talking about them, one other issue raised is by appointment. Did you have a, is there a way to define those hours to address the concern? Yeah, go ahead.
When we have appointments, it tends to be around a commissioned piece, so that people can come in and see how the piece is progressing. And we want to be transparent about that because it's important to us. Our commissions are our largest, actually, money maker out of our business. So it's important to have people come in to see what we do. And we can't necessarily say, well, we can only do that on Friday from 10 to 5, or whatever. We need to be able to open it up if, for a specific time. The other appointment we had last year that came up that was really frustrating is that we had a class from the art colony that wanted to come and see the gallery and the studios. And it was going to be midweek. And so that's an issue because technically we can't be open. So we need to have some flexibility, and we have always said by appointment. We just put it into the application. So that's what we mean by appointment.
Okay. Okay. The public comments stopped. Questions from the board? Does anyone have a question from this fellow?
I think they have more comment.
Since they were able to respond there, I would like to just ask, with the, the number of days that you would allow them to add to this, we have, you know, we have to, I guess, deal with, they have to be able to get their financial viability or whatever it is. So it's like their financial viability, until they get to break-even point. We're trading privacy, the quiet that we, we used to have, and it's like, I feel like.
I think too many comments.
We've tried, we've, we've got other neighbors who, they also would like the privacy, and they feel like we're having it traded away or negotiated away from us so that they're, they think financially successful by living enough hours. And that's a struggle, living where we do.
Right, and that's, I, I think we understand. Anyone else have comments?
I have a question, I mean, if there's no more comment.
Okay. Question?
Steve Frickman, you mentioned something about Sundays could be a viable.
We could drop Sundays.
You could drop Sundays, except during the studio tour.
Well, yeah, the studio tour is its own.
Right, right, but I mean.
Which is how we got.
Sundays during the rest of the season, you'd be willing to drop those? Well, I'm going to make a suggestion that we would maybe, if we were to incorporate that, that goes a long way to addressing Scholmaszki's concerns. And as long as, and maybe extending then the CUP maybe out to like four years. You've already built the building and the gallery and the physical, your sculpture garden is already, you know, is there. So, you know, it's not like we're, we expect you to go on a flyer, you know, on a one-year or something and invest a lot of money in the infrastructure. So I think a three-year, four-year timeframe is reasonable there.
One comment I make, I heard him say, grow the business, is the intent. And when is it time to take the business out of the neighborhood and put it into a commercial setting? And that's what we're wrestling with here.
Well, it's a permitted use, a home, this is a permitted use.
With conditions.
Yeah, with conditions.
Right.
It's not, you know, it's kind of like beauty shops, a carpenter shop. I, I could have a carpenter shop in my, on my property.
Right.
I mean, and, and I might have occasional clients that would come into the shop. I mean, the addition here is that they allow people into the gallery.
Right.
You know, and they represent, you know, they allow other people to sell their work. And I think they're going, I think giving up the Sundays does a lot to ameliorate the, the quiet, you know, to those weekend concerns of the other applicants.
Right. Tim?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, as a point of clarification, that, that is correct in terms of, I know there's a lot of concerns between when does a home business or when does a home occupation become a home business, become a commercial occupation? Even, even though they may be of the same kind of activity, it's the size and the scope and the scale, which is up to this commission to go ahead and determine. This commission had reviewed the permit and the feedback that we've gotten, and that's why the time, initial timeframe had been set, so that you would be able to get feedback from what had actually happened over the few years and such. And so either a review or a shorter permit timeframe for additional review. After that, would be able to give that further gauge or timeframe for a review to see when it does. would be able to give that further gauge or timeframe for a review to see when it does rise to the level where it's not compatible with the rural community.
Okay.
And Judy, pardon me in asking your question, I mean, we just approved a CUP for a coffee shop.
Right.
You know, and that, that's a pretty, pretty commercial, I mean, it's not in the same situation exactly.
Right, the setting's different.
Yeah, a little bit different, but...
Yeah. Okay, let's, anyone else from the planning commission? Jerry?
On a typical week, how many visitors do you get?
So we're talking in the summer.
In the summer, in your, in your prime season.
The number was here, I don't know where it is. We had, the average, and this was excluding the fall tour, which is...
Right, right. The ordinary business hours.
Yeah, yeah. In 2021, it was 63 visitors. So 3.5 visitors per weekend.
Okay. Has that grown over the years? Has that grown dramatically over the years?
No, I'd say at one point, which somebody on their letter seemed to feel that we had, you know, had been busier. There was a busier year during the summer, one year, well, really was because there was promoted through the county...
Cook County, yes.
Cook County visitors, a gallery tour, which was at the beginning of the season. And that was quite a successful little weekend, I mean, for the numbers of people. So that's an exception. That put that number up a bit higher. But otherwise, it is very typical to have whole weekends where we have, we see no clients whatsoever. Other times, we might have four, five.
One last question on that, if I might then. During these times, with all these people coming and going, or these few people coming at them, have there been any complaints about the activities during the season? Or are all the complaints been heard here, an objection? Is this an ongoing thing out there?
Have there been complaints to us about what we were doing?
Tim, have there been any, okay, so there have been no formal complaints. The only place that we're hearing of disturbance is here in the annual review.
Yeah.
Okay, I think we're ready to hear a motion.
Well, I will make a motion to approve this for, we would, with some modifications to the conditions. The first modification would be that the three evening events per operating season are all indoor events in the gallery with no outside events, activities. The second modification would be, the interim use permit would be for three years with a review. I mean, for the, or conditional use permit for three years with a review. And that we would add a new condition, which would be that the hours of operation would not include Sundays, except for the studio tour week.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion? You want to second it, Tim?
I would love, I cannot second that. But just a point of clarification, it is an interim use and not a CUP.
Oh, okay.
You can't put time limits on a CUP.
Oh, okay, all right, all right.
Okay, is there a second on that motion?
I, can I make a point, or just, I would second, but I just...
Okay, make a second?
I will second.
Okay. Discussion?
I'm not sure we need an additional condition. I think we could just strike Sunday out of condition, condition one, because I believe it reads as, as the 10 consecutive days of the studio tour...
Thursday through Saturday.
Saturday.
So Thursday through Saturday versus Thursday through Sunday.
With the exception of the studio tour.
Yep, which is written in there.
Okay.
So I don't think we need to add a condition. We can just change that from Sunday to Saturday.
You're okay with that for the motion, Keith?
Yeah, yeah, that's...
Okay, so the motion's made.
Cleans it a little easier.
No more comment.
I don't understand the motion.
Okay, clarify the motion, Keith, please.
Well, under, under the condition that was, that the stat that was submitted was that business operations would be limited from Thursday through Sunday.
That isn't my issue. My issue is number of years. Are, is the permit only for three years?
It's going to be for three years. Three years, yes.
Or is the permit for the 10-year period, and it's reviewed in three years?
Well, it's for three years, and then it's reviewed.
But then we have to reapply?
Right.
To a whole different committee?
Pardon?
To a whole different committee.
Possibly.
Possibly. But, but you know, Sharon, to be honest with you, that three-year timeframe is kind of a standard for a lot of these. It's not like 10 years is pushing it out a ways. You know, we, you know, it's gravel pits, home businesses, they're all kind of...
Okay, I just needed to understand.
Any further discussion from the planning commission? Neva?
May I just clarify, Madam Chair? Does this include the annual reviews or not?
As long as there's no complaints, I think we're okay.
So just a solid three years new IUP?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. Because I believe if there would be a complaint, it would be addressed at that time. Okay, so the motion's been made.
Only in the case of, if it was a substantive violation of any of these, and then which, that would be a little different than just a complaint.
Sure.
Okay, so that's, that's just the clarification, okay?
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign.
Ah.
One opposed? Okay, Jerry opposed.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
May I really quickly double check? So the conditions of that motion were the number one, with the change for Sunday and no outside activities for the three evening events. Interim use valid, interim use is valid for three years. And upon sale or transfer of the property, the IUP shall terminate. Did you want, did you intend to adopt conditions four through six, or not, or any of those?
Yeah, I thought, I think...
Okay. I just wanted to be clear of what we discussed.
I mean, the noise, like, the noise thing, that would come in if there was a complaint, and then you'd have to investigate.
Sure.
You know, I mean, you know, that's all. And, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to the Gunflint LLC request. Okay, Neva?
Yeah. Is our applicant here? Is Matt here? I'm not sure if our applicant's here, but I don't know what he looks like.
Okay. Well, we'll do it anyway.
Yeah. Matt Reagan's not here, right? Okay. All right, ready for me to go, Madam Chair?
I am.
Okay. This is a request for a conditional use permit to build an accessory structure over 3,000 square feet in accordance with Section 4.07B11 within the FAR3 Zone District. This property was purchased by the current owner in April of last year. The property is entirely within the FAR3 Zone District and within the Shoreland area of Poplar Lake. Within the zoning district, construction of an accessory structure in excess of 3,000 square feet, or any more than one accessory structure without the existence of a primary structure, is identified as conditional use. The applicant is requesting to place an 80 by 80 steel barn accessory structure for the personal storage of snowmobiles, UTVs, automobiles, trailers, and tools, personal recreational items. The applicant owns a cabin at 107 Voyagers Point as their year-round second home, and will use this accessory structure for personal storage. A driveway was installed off the Gunflint, and site prep has begun to prepare for the building pad and driveway area. The applicant has worked with Rick Backstrom and Charlie Traval to identify the building site, and a survey has been provided. The applicant's plan to install electricity, a well, and a septic system to allow for the washing of equipment and bathroom facility on site. There are no plans to use this structure as a dwelling. The site is well-vegetated with an existing vegetated buffer between the proposed building site and the road. A grade fill permit was approved in November of 2021 for the driveway entrance, driveway, and building pad, which did require some blasting into bedrock. I included some details from the Cook County Stormwater Enforcement Officer, who did the approval of that permit for your reference. I did include some staff recommendations in the report. I had a couple of updated notes also beyond what's in the report. So on Monday, I sent out the end of the comment period, last comments. So there was two in support and eight opposed. A lot of different reasonings for the opposition, so I hope you had time to read through those comments. I did want to remind you that for this size structure, there would be no CUP required if there had already been a primary structure on the property. So the primary reason for the CUP is because there's not another structure, somebody's not living on that site. I did spend some time doing some background research after receiving the comments regarding the historic status of the Gunflint Trail that I wanted to update you on. So I spoke with Sarah Beimers with the Minnesota State Historic Preservation Office this afternoon at 4:00. And she, she said that the Gunflint is identified as a historic road in Minnesota, and it's the most well-preserved scenic byway in the state, and is considered for eligible listing on the National Registry for Historic Places. The reason that this is important is because the Gunflint Trail is then open to a lot of funding sources in the future if it does get listed as a historic road. The way that this comes into being for this hearing is, the most important thing is whether or not this structure is visible from the Gunflint Trail. So it doesn't matter if it's not visible, as far as they're concerned for the historic status of the Gunflint Trail. She made that very clear to me. It is all about the feeling and the intrinsic value of the Gunflint Trail. So there could be a conditioned place that the structure is not visible from the Gunflint Trail, and that would totally mitigate that concern. Let's see, I think that's pretty much the biggest, I mean, the biggest take-home point as far as all of the historical parts of the Gunflint Trail was the visibility aspect. So the structure is placed 100 feet from the centerline of the road. There's possibilities that it's visible as you're approaching that driveway entrance, but like, right at the driveway entrance, there's this 12-foot bedrock up cliffside. So you're not going to see a structure that's 100 feet back right from, when you got a 12-foot cliff in front of your face. It's going to be on the sides of that, if it's visible. But again, it's pretty well-vegetated. So I think there might be some room for conditioning this that may mitigate those concerns. So I also wanted to add that this print, or the site has met all of our permitting requirements. So as far as our office is concerned, they've done their due diligence on meeting all of our permitting requirements.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak about the Gunflint LLC? Can you step to the mic, please?
Hello, I'm Nancy Seaton, and I live at 318 South Hungry Jack Road.
Tip the mic a bit. There.
Okay. And, and I'm on the Scenic Byway Committee, so. And I'm wondering if any of you had a chance to visit the site? Anne?
I've driven by it 100 times, but...
But not now, knowing that something's going to be there, okay? Just...
I'm familiar with where it is. Like, Keith, I've driven up and down.
Many, many times.
Sure, sure, okay. Not seeing specifically where it is, then I wonder how you can determine that this building at this site fits the 2016 land use plan, because that's important. And that you know that the land use plan states there is a strong concern for the scale, materials, and design of buildings. The historic image of the trail has increased in importance as other areas of North America have become more homogeneous. So the scale is really big. The materials are kind of not very woodsy, and the design is kind of not very woodsy. The Gunflint Trail is a national scenic byway. It took a lot of time to be designated that, and that happened in 2008. The natural and historic qualities were the qualities that the application was centered upon. So doing anything that affects that, we get, we are concerned about. And in 2011, the highway engineer at that time had Gemini Research create the architecture, history, inventory, and evaluation of the Gunflint Trail. Kind of a long term to just say, research what's historic about the Gunflint Trail. And Neva filled you in on a lot more than, brought you up to date on that. If it's possible to summarize that inch-thick volume in a few sentences, it would be, the Gunflint Trail is historic road and is eligible for designation. You just need to fill out the application. The report warns very clearly that this designation could be jeopardized one inappropriate project at a time. So whether that's the road making, you know, making it wider, changing the bed, the footprint of the road, those things all matter, but also what we see, you know? If we saw Morton buildings all along, that would change the historic character of the road. Our current highway engineer, Robbie Haas, has done some research and determined that he would like to move forward on applying for this designation, which would open up hundreds of thousands of dollars in competitive grants that would be applied to projects on the Gunflint Trail, paving, bridge, and culvert repair. So will this affect that designation? That's kind of important to know. And not knowing, is it worth approving the project as it stands? Just, you know, this building of this size in that site, maybe there's a different place on the property that they could put that big building, or they could put a smaller-scale building where they're looking at right now. And then to make sure that the zoning ordinance conditions are met, and to meet all of the zoning concerns, does it conform to the land use or comprehensive plan of the county? The use is compatible with the existing neighborhood, the use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding area of uses permitted by right in the zone, permitted by right in the zone district. And the location and character of the proposed use is considered to be consistent with the desired pattern and development of the area. So it definitely doesn't fit in with the way that area is being used. So I'm not sure that it meets all those conditions, and I encourage you to...
Thank you.
Vote no.
Is there, I forgot to ask, is there someone here representing the Gunflint? There's no one on the speaker? That would be helpful. Okay, anyone else wish to speak to this from the public? Okay, we'll close the public comment. And commissioner comment?
I'll start, nobody else wants to. The staff mentioned, talked about the mitigation of vegetation. And I have a problem with that, because we have seen what a fire can do on the Gunflint Trail. And that mitigation could all go in a matter of minutes. You know, if the right fire moves through in the right spot, and with those thin, very thin soils and the rocky outcrops and stuff that were along the road there, I mean, it could take years for, you know, vegetation to replace. So I'm very leery about the idea of vegetation as being a mitigating factor when we have, this is in a very active forest fire area. The other thing is the scale. I built a large, it could be a three-car garage, considered a three-car garage, it's 32 by 24. That's 758 square feet. This is like putting eight of those on this property, in terms of square footage. I mean, that's way beyond any kind of, you know, thing you would see on the trail. It's, it's just way too big. And the drawing that they submitted, I think at one point it's referred to as a barn. Well, that's not, drawing is not a barn. It's an industrial warehouse, in terms of its look. And they've included some, you know, it'll have metal roof, metal siding, all of this. And for that reason, I really just can't support this at all. I mean, it's, it just seems so out of a character, and it seems to violate the spirit of the county plan, and the whole, whole feeling of the Gunflint Trail. And the sheer size, how, how much space do, does 6,400 square feet, when the property owners already have a property with garages and parking spaces at their residence, just seems... at their residence, just seems, it seems beyond what's reasonable.
Okay.
Excuse me. I believe you're discussing our building that we're proposing. We were told you started at six o'clock.
Okay. And you're the Regans?
I'm the Regan.
Yeah.
Okay. Why don't you come to the microphone? It's kind of awkward because you missed what's been said, but...
Yeah, the email that we got from Eva said six o'clock.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I am sorry about that. That is not...
No big deal.
But we'll get it straight.
No, go ahead and sit down.
So, we're talking about, I'm glad you're here because we are kind of without answers. So...
Sure.
Would you like to present what you're proposing here?
Well, you know, I bought the property, and I'm proposing to build a steel pole barn, essentially, 6,400 square feet, 80 by 80. We brought the road in around the corner. There's a large rock cliff there on the Gunflint, so it's hidden behind there. Now, I don't know, is Charlie here yet? He was going to be here at six also. And Charlie Traval. And so, we're just trying to get it hidden behind that rock wall. It is hidden, you know, it's back there as far as we can. We'd love to go back further, but we couldn't because there's wetlands there. And so, we're kind of working within the constraints that we can. But that's kind of that. I guess I'll answer any questions you've got.
Okay. Keith, you were questioning the size.
Yeah, I mean, 6,400 square feet, that's equivalent of about eight three-car garages.
Sure.
Why so big?
Well, I've got, you know, three enclosed trailers, a pontoon. I've got three boys, so we've got a dozen snowmobiles between all of us. We've just got a bunch of stuff to put in there, and I'd rather park it inside than leave it parked outside as so many of our neighbors do with just kind of trash, you know, laying around their lots. I like to get everything inside so it's secure and clean.
Well, we're a little bit at a loss here because you didn't hear the presentation of Mrs. Seaton about the Gunflint Trail. And I don't know, Nancy, do you want to reiterate some of that stuff so these people could hear it? Are they familiar with those, those facts?
Scenic byway.
I received her letter. I guess her response to trying to make the Gunflint Trail historical area is, first of all, is that something that everyone is interested on the Gunflint Trail? We've had no voting on whether or not that's something we want. Second of all, she doesn't state anywhere in her letter that our building would not allow for that to happen if we just did decide to go forward with that in the area. There's just speculation that perhaps it wouldn't. You can see, sorry.
When I talked with Charlie, and he'll be here tonight, as he said, when he looked at the elevations there, if a six-foot person were standing with their eyes at six feet on the Gunflint, looking out towards our property, they may see the tip of our roof, but that's it. I mean, we hid it behind that cliff and the trees for that very purpose. And I also selected a 212 pitch roof. I'm paying extra for the steel inside the building to keep it purposefully lower. So, that way it doesn't...
So, what's the maximum height of the building?
22 foot 8 inches, I believe.
Which is under the height of a two-story cabin would be.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm just wondering here, I apologize profusely for my mess up there. I'm wondering if it may make sense to table this and address some other items, and then return to this once Charlie is here, being he's under the impression that things are starting in 10 minutes. We've got a couple of other items.
Let's do that. We'll just take a break until everybody's here, and, because we're going to just kind of wait around until he shows up anyway. So, let's get something done.
That sounds good.
Well, why don't we move on and get the ALLETE?
Move to the ALLETE CUP?
Yeah. I make a motion that we table this request till the end, until we deal with items C, D, and E, then everybody will be here, and we'll take it up at the end.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there a motion made? Is there a second? We table it?
Second.
Charlie, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, well, it's tabled. We'll move on to the ALLETE request. Hopefully, the ALLETE people are here.
I got to stop.
Okay. Niva?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This request is for a conditional use permit to construct and operate Two Islands 115 kilovolt electric substation to replace the Tac Harbor substation. Minnesota Power/ALLETE is requesting to develop this substation as a replacement substation for Tac Harbor. The existing Tac Harbor substation has been idled for power generator. However, it remains a hub for regional electric transmission network. The replacement substation will address issues of aging infrastructure, reliable operation, and safety standards updates associated with the existing Tac Harbor substation. Wetlands are present on the property, and a wetland delineation was completed in 2021. A replacement plan is currently, a replacement wetland plan is currently under review to mitigate the proposed wetland impacts resulting from the development. And according to enclosed memo provided by Ms. Travis, the replacement plan will likely be approved sometime after the comment period closes on March 4th, which has been, I believe. As a condition of approval, land services will require a large site stormwater permit application with SWIP. The proposed site is located north Highway 61 and north of the Tac Harbor Power Plant. The property is located within the single-family residential R1 zoning district and the heavy industrial zoning district. The site is partially located within the Schroeder Place plat, which is R1 zoning. Subsequent to plat approval, ALLETE halted active marketing of these lots. According to the applicant, Minnesota Power originally cited the project to lie within the HI's height, heavy industrial zoning district entirely. However, due to the topography and the large contiguous wetland running through a large portion of the HI zone, they had to relocate it to stay out of the linear wetland feature. We did not receive any written comments to this comment period. I had one discussion over the phone with somebody who was curious about it and sent him the application, and he never submitted any other concerns after that.
Thank you. Is there someone from ALLETE that would wish to address the planning commission?
Sure. Yeah, we can. Leave it in the synopsis there, though.
I'm Casey Werner. I'm an engineer and project manager with Minnesota Power. So, I'm managing this project.
Okay.
Zach Lokowski, environmental compliance specialist. I'm in charge of citing and permitting during this phase of the project.
Do you wish to add to Ms. Maxwell's comments?
No, I think that was a great rundown of what, of what Niva said. The biggest component of this is the aging infrastructure of the Taconite Harbor substation that's existing near Taconite Harbor or right at Tac Harbor Energy Center. Yeah, I really don't have anything to add to that.
Okay.
You, Casey?
No, there were a couple of comments on lighting and structure heights at the site. So, the lighting will be, there will be task lighting, we call it, at the new substation. So, that is, it's small lighting within 10 to 12 feet of the ground at strategic locations where some of our technicians have to operate equipment at night. But it's downward facing. I do have a photo of some similar lighting at a site we recently developed, if you're curious to see what that looks like. And the structure heights of the site, we're still in the engineering process, so we don't have firm heights of the equipment at the site. But we expect that the tallest structures to be 65 feet above the finished grade at the site.
Okay. All right. Is, I'm just going to ask, is anyone here to, with opposition to the substation? We'll have them speak. Okay. I'm going to leave you for questions because we may have some. So, we'll close the public comment. Bruce?
I did have a quick comment, just a couple of comments in support.
Okay.
I can say that, not opposition, but be quick.
Okay.
I have my township supervisor hat on. We had an annual meeting last night. Some people had some questions, and I tried to answer them with the knowledge that I had. Some were wondering where the location was, if they'd be able to use the vote for walking and heating, but that's privilege, not a right. A lot of people were surprised that the current switching drive at Taconite Harbor is being used right now. The public good would be best served by replacing the aging structure used to transmit electricity for great river energy in Cook County, even though Minnesota Power doesn't sell, you know, electricity directly in one of us right now. So, it's important.
Thank you. Okay, we'll close it to the public. And any comments from the commission?
Madam Chair, I would like to point out, I, one of my family's companies potentially may be selling the wetland credits.
I thought of that.
So, I would recuse myself if the board felt it appropriate.
Do we still have a quorum?
We still have a quorum.
I would say probably you want to just maybe sit in the back and not participate unless you want to...
All right.
I think you'd find it to push your chair back, Charlie, not participate.
All right. He's gone. Madam Chair, yes?
I have a question. I'm just curious about the wetlands credit. Will those credits be used in Cook County?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Kuckler?
I think it's pretty straightforward. I don't think we need to take much time. Unless somebody else has any questions, I would make a motion to approve.
Anyone else? Anyone else?
I'm not going.
I do have, I've done some inquiries, and the concern I have, and it's my own concern, is the residents who are nearby, how impacted are they? And the fact that Schroeder is losing potentially five to 10 residential lots, could ALLETE provide five to 10 elsewhere so that the community still has residential lots available? That would be one thing I would like to see.
Madam Chair, when I was on the board, when the ALLETE did the, you know, when they did the big plat of all the lands that they acquired and wanted, the railroad way of the railroad and stuff, and they did, they created a lot of residential property at that time. And so, I really don't think, this is kind of a larger issue that affects the whole county, and it affects, you know, a very basic part of our infrastructure. And these things, there, you see smaller ones, Maple Hill, there's one up on County Road 7 heading up the hill. I mean, they're not as large as this, but they're within sight of residences and stuff. And I don't think we get any, I don't know, does the board get any complaints? And one thing, this is going to be taller because it's 65 feet tall, but when I, I know when we did that small one that we added along County Road 7 years ago, I think that was Arrowhead that did that, and we asked for some tree planting for mitigation. Is this going to, is there vegetation around this that...
It's all vegetated.
Okay. So, that's already basically in place. There's mature vegetation around it.
Correct.
Yeah. And this isn't a comment, my comment is not a negative about the substation. It's just, it would be really nice if you threw in some residential lots available to the community.
Well, they already have. When they did that plat, they created all kinds of them for sale.
Yeah.
Am I wrong on that?
I...
As I recall, you did.
If they are for sale, I don't know.
Have they all been sold? I mean, there is...
No, they're not. I know that...
Okay. So, yeah, so there's a whole...
They're not being offered, Keith.
Direction has changed once.
Oh, really?
I don't know exactly what they're doing with the Schroeder Place plat at this point. I know that this, there's, there's nothing happening at this time with that plat, with those, with those blocks.
Okay. That's just my comment. It's not...
I do know, I was told that further to the northwest, there are another set of blocks that were set aside and planted for residential...
Yeah, I mean, there was a huge amount of land there that was platted.
Yep.
As well as that land right down by the old power plant where they had the lake shore, the more expensive lots in there.
Yep.
And, well, I, I've made...
That wouldn't be a condition or anything. I'm just suggesting it would be a good...
I think that would be a great question for a real estate team, if that comes up, to see how they could answer that.
Okay. Anybody ready for a motion?
I made a motion to approve.
Okay. Was there a second?
I'll second it.
No additional conditions? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll do the Schroeder proposed zoning ordinance and zone map amendments? Tim, I believe is...
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just going to tee this up for Mr. Martinson, who is going to kind of present on behalf of Schroeder. This, this request is actually being channeled through the Schroeder Township in kind of conjunction with their plan, the subarea planning. We do a countywide comprehensive land use plan, and then each of the township had subsequently conducted their own subarea planning efforts, Luton, Topeka, and Schroeder. And some townships have continued into that process, other ones have kind of sat back for a little bit. Right now, Schroeder Township has done additional kind of planning and is looking to not change the zone map other than to add or change the designation of what currently is general commercial in that area that's designated on the map that you have, to change it from general commercial and creating a new zone called the Schroeder Mixed Use, kind of like Topeka has a Topeka Mixed Use. And what it does is it expands the flexibility of the types of uses that can be in that particular area. And I guess at this point, I'll just go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Martinson, and he can do the presentation.
Sure. And I will be following a handout. If I need to speak louder, just put your, you know, thumbs up.
You could pull the microphone towards you.
Okay, is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, sure. Schroeder Township requests Cook County amended the zoning text to add a new zoning district, Schroeder Mixed Use District, in the zoning map within the town center, replacing the general district zoning with the new Schroeder Mixed Use zoning. The basis for a request is as follows. The proposed zoning amendment is consistent with the land use plan adopted by Schroeder Township in Cook County. A 2016 Schroeder Subarea Plan states, mixed uses of residential and general commercial are to be encouraged from Temperance to Taconite Harbor. Schroeder in 2004 probably would have sought a new mixed use district if it had the option. Only zoning changes were made to Minnesota Power ALLETE partials west of the town center, which Keith said he was on the board at that time. Later years, Luton and Topeka Townships created new districts tailored to their communities. Second point, since the 1984 zoning map was created, the Schroeder community has changed. Residential and commercial uses have changed back and forth within the general commercial district. Third point, a public need exists for the new zoning change. The new district will reflect actual mixed residential and commercial use on the town center business district. The current wording allows a single-family residential structure only when used in conjunction with a commercial operation. The new zoning text and map change would also remedy the situation of a mortgage company denying a residential loan due to the commercial designation of a parcel. I know it's been an issue in, you know, several cases. The public interest would best be served by rezoning the general commercial partials within the Schroeder Town Center rather than other partials in the community. We really combined, you know, the aspects of the residential and the commercial, you know, zoning together. The main change was elimination of a conditional use permit required for a single-family residential structure when used in conjunction with a commercial operation, and allowance of a single-family dwelling, manufactured home, modular home, vacation home rental, bed breakfast home, one accessory structure, and home occupations. Also eliminated were permitted uses of hospital, clinic, rest home, marinas on Lake Superior, and conditional uses of light manufacturing and theaters. Added were conditional uses of raising of small livestock and automobile service/repair facilities... repair facilities, along with prohibited uses of adult entertainment and dog kennel. Lot and setback requirements were kept the same for both commercial and residential uses. When you look at the Tofti and Lutzen new districts, they actually made it less restrictive, you know, dealing with all the setbacks and lot requirements that would not change in this mixed use, you know, district. The community felt they wanted to keep that the same in Schroder. Now, dealing with adult entertainment that was brought up in the process, and I asked Tim, you know, Nelson, and he said that adult entertainment would be allowed in Schroder. Tofti had foresight to make it a prohibited, you know, use. And I looked into Lutzen, and I think they're looking at the issue, I know they're looking at the issue right now, because technically, adult entertainment, you can have a strip joint in two of the zoning districts in Lutzen as we speak, because permitted use right now, it says amusement and recreation service in Lutzen. And I'd easily say that adult entertainment is amusement, you know, there. So my guess, that's going to come up for Lutzen. You know, many, currently, many owners are in violation when the general commercial properties are sold with, you know, residential, you know, structures because of the conditional use requirement. There's many times in the last 25 years where, you know, people have sold their residential properties, or maybe just changed hands within, you know, the family. But technically, they should have gone through the conditional use process at that time because it's not a, you know, a permitted, you know, use, not even allowed to get a conditional use for it. Sure, they say, you know, current, people have had it since the beginning of grandfather den. So that's an issue, why we should, you know, change this. I also added language to reference other sections of the ordinance, you know, for further requirements on the use, so making it more user, you know, friendly. You'll see that, you know, several places, you know, C so-and-so, you know, section.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to comment further on the Schroder zone change from the public? Okay, we'll close the public comment, go to the commissioners here.
Well, I think it makes sense. I mean, over the years, the area has changed, and unfortunately, some of the commercial businesses are no longer there that were there. And, you know, and so that it makes sense. This, it also addresses making buildable lots, your concern, more, more feasible. And so I'm inclined to support, support it. I, I think it's, it reflects the reality on the ground as far as what the use of this area is going to be. I, I really don't know if we'll see, you know, who knows if there'll be more businesses that move in there, but, you know, it's.
You might be surprised.
Well, you know, they, I, I might be, but, you know, I don't, I guess, I guess, you know, it's really sad, you know, you lost the cafe, you lost the hardware store, you lost, you know, it's been years since you lost the lumberyard. And, I mean, it's, it's, it lost the gas station. And I guess it's just a fact of life. It's a, it's part of the problem.
It's a change.
Within one area, and Gramray's the next, and it's just not, you know, if there was a demand for rebuilding those businesses, they would have happened. So I think making it easier for these mixed residential areas is a good thing.
Do you have anything, Charlie?
No, no, I don't. I think it's.
The direction?
I think it makes sense. I support it.
I'll just make a motion.
Okay, make a motion. You're ahead, Bruce.
I noticed this morning that, I don't know if it's too late to add this, you know, looking at all my notes, you know, from the, you know, the meeting and making sure all the language, you know, is correct, and I noticed that there was one conditional use that wasn't on, you know, the draft, you know, copy. I think it's, you know, it's minor, and it's conditional use, not a permitted. But right now, in R1, an accessory structure in excess of 1,000 square feet, comma, or any other, or more than one accessory structure without the existence of a principal structure requires a conditional use permit, and it's not, you know, in the draft. Could that be added? Because I, you know, thinking about it, when you look right now in the area, they are.
Bruce, I, I will accept that.
I think we've got a problem here.
That was intended to be a part of it. I have no objection to what you're stating.
Tim's got a problem.
Tim.
It wasn't published.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and that, that is correct. I, I have no problems with the, with the provision, but it was not public notice, and we would be adding language that.
But that could be done, because this will still go to the county board, right? Will there be enough notice?
This is the public hearing.
This is the public hearing.
This is the public hearing.
So we'll have to have another public hearing for that provision?
If we wanted to add that provision, we would have to renotice that.
I think you'd want to just get what we're doing here and then come back and pick that on if you needed.
And I don't know how important it is, thinking of the community, Julie and Jerry Donick, along with Diane Silver, have accessory structure in a building. I know that exceeds 100, you know, square feet, it's greater than 30 by 30.
Apparently, the, the issue here is that we can't legally do that. And so what, what that would do is, we can approve the, the motions.
Or table it and go back and.
We can either table it, or you could come back with an amendment at another time with a hearing on that.
Sure.
Well, would tabling be an easier way to do it and come back with the amendment and just, it would take us long the next meeting to?
Tim.
From a, from a logistics point, it's kind of six to one half dozen of the other, but I, I would actually recommend going ahead and just passing this. And in the meantime, we can republish and get it going on for, for April. And that way, that language would already be set then, and so we're only dealing with one line, which would be, you know, less to have to discuss.
Right, and I think you could figure out whether you really need that.
Yeah, I, I would, you know, wait for you to do anything. I'll bring it back to the town board. I think, you know, it's minor, and some could always go for variance, and I don't think it would be opposed.
Let's pass what we've got here.
Sure, that'd be okay.
And then you bring back what you need.
Okay.
Okay, so there you are.
My, my original motion then is to approve that what the document that we have before us, as it's stated.
I'll second.
That's second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Then we need the septic ordinance amendments. That's going to be real brief, right?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and, and yes, I would imagine that it would be. We've had no public comments on it, and I forgot to mention that we did not also have any public comments on the Schroder Town language as well. This amendment, frankly, the first two parts of it is procedural, and basically, the intent of it is really just to keep the permit activity kind of moving along. We've had some, some issues with, with some contractors not, not getting their paperwork and such like that, and we're looking for tools to be able to keep that along so that we don't hold up the actual installers or the property owners from getting their projects going. This language has been sent to, directly to each of the septic contractors in the county, and we've received no comments back from them of objection or anything like that. And then also, the next two portions are just extending out the period of a certificate of compliance. And normally, the, the, you basically would have a, you do a septic inspection, then it's only good for so many years if it's a new system, and only so many years if it's a, if it's a, an inspection of an existing system. Well, that was more important back, like in the, in the 90s, when you were dealing with some of the old-school style type of, of septic systems that are out there. Now, many of, so many of them are being replaced, that if there's an inspection now, and if they've been built to the better standards, we find that those, we, we don't have to re-inspect those as frequently as possible.
It's time-consuming and expensive.
Yes, it is.
So, any motions?
I'll make the motion.
I do have a comment. I'm the second change, the no permit issued to landowners' property, which there's unresolved violations or any other ordinance unless that permit is department, part of apartment. I'm opposed to that. I think that's, there's, some of these violations are things that the remedies are out of the landowner's hands to some extent. I understand the intent of the, the change.
Okay, let's go back. We've got a motion. Is there a second? And it can die for lack of a second.
Well, okay, I mean, does anybody else want to address Mr. LaBota's concerns?
Well, we'll either do that in discussion or let the motion die.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, now we'll discuss.
I just mostly wanted to make my point. I think.
Can you say that again, Charlie?
I, I think having.
Which part is it?
It's the tying, tying issuance of a permit to resolution to previous permit issues. Although I understand the intent, I think, for example, tying other land use permit, like a grading fill, to a, a septic compliance issue. For example, this year where contractors are booked and you can't get, or contractor has, the designer has cancer, or some other reason, that they, the landowner can't get that issue resolved to tie up other permits for them to move forward on their property on other projects. If I'm understanding it right, that I would like to hear Tim's opinion on this.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioner LaBota, that, that kind of is that premise, that we, we find it difficult to issue permits when there are violations on the property. We do work with the property owners, but we have founds that, and these are just, this is just dealing with septic permits. This isn't dealing with all the other permits. This language here about the no permit will be issued is no, no septic permit, because that's in the septic ordinance. And so it, it just relates to, and, and looking at the examples, if there's grading and filling, well, the resolution of that might impact the actual septic permit and location. So we want to try to get that resolved before we issue the septic permit, because the resolution might actually impact the septic permit. And that's kind of why that was in there.
I don't have any more to add.
Okay, does that answer your question? Are you still opposed?
That answered my question, and I guess as long as other permits aren't tied up. If it's specifically septic.
Should we ask that septic?
Primary one that I could see an issue. Most other violations are really due to the landowner, so.
Do we need to add that word? Which we can't do?
Well, you can, it's in the septic ordinance, so it, it.
Okay.
Kind of automatically talks septic.
Well, we can't, we can't modify this without no satisfaction. So we have to vote this up and down, and we have to come back with a modification later.
Based on Tim's, what Tim just stated, I, my concern is satisfied.
All right, so with motions made, motion second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. We'll back up to the, reopen the hearing for the Gunflint LLC. No. Yes. Matt Reagan. And do you want to just kind of run through what you've, no, let's just start over.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Is the owner's contractor here yet, or?
Yes. Okay. All right, sorry, everybody, again. Okay, so conditional use permit for an accessory structure over 3,000 square feet in accordance with the zoning district requirements of the FARA III zoning district. I read through the application narrative, which has been submitted out to everybody online. I think the take-home points that I had added to that narrative was that the comment period had come back with two comments in support and eight comments opposed. Primary concerns were the size of the structure and concerns about the impact of the historic status of the Gunflint Trail. I reminded the Planning Commission that had there been a principal structure on the property, that the CUP would not be needed for this structure. The CUP is really needed because there's no principal structure. So this structure could just be permitted with a land use permit if there's a principal structure there already. I spoke to the State Historic Preservation Office this afternoon to discuss the historic status of the Gunflint Trail, and what she told me was that the Gunflint Trail is identified as historic, a historic road in Minnesota. It is the most well-preserved scenic byway in the state and is considered eligible for listing on the National Registry for Historic Places. And the really big take-home point from the State Historic Preservation Office is that this could be at risk if there was changes to the aesthetics to the Gunflint Trail over time. So kind of small chinks in the armor could really risk a really large funding source in, in the long run. The state, or this county is pursuing, after my discussions with the county road engineer, to pursue going down this avenue officially, of getting the Gunflint Trail eligible and listed for this status of historic. And then the final thing is that about this whole historic status part of things, it is all tied to the visibility from the Gunflint Trail. So it's not the fact that it's on a property on the Gunflint Trail, it's that if this structure is visible from the Gunflint Trail, that is what would impact the aesthetics and potentially impact the risk of this property being listed as a historic road. So I hope I captured the nature of all that correctly, Madam Chair.
And Ms. Seaton, do you want to kind of recap your comments?
Well, I, I believe you all heard me.
Yep.
And they followed pretty closely what was submitted, and they implied that they had read the letter, so.
Okay.
If there's a need, I will.
Okay, I think we're okay if we have questions. And the gentleman in the back.
Good evening. My name is Dave Hanson, and I reside at 202 Washout Road. I just have a couple of comments. As Niva had stated, there's really not any, I guess, issues with where the structure is. It meets all the setbacks. People weren't, maybe a couple of issues with the size, but the real issue is visibility from the road. And I think I, I heard that nobody had actually been out there yet. And I also heard that Mr. Reagan had stated that he, the building would be about 20. 21 feet?
22.
22 feet? And that he put on a 212 pitch, which was, I guess, in his support, that was looking at trying to eliminate or reduce the visibility. 212 pitch with this, in this area with our snow loads is, is, could be kind of difficult. That building could be at risk, but anyway. I would, I don't know how, you know, and I'm not telling you what to do, but I don't know how you can make a decision on a visibility issue, which is, is what we're really talking about, from what I can tell, unless you've been out there, and maybe at every four corners of the building site, you put a 22-foot pole up with a flag on it, and you see what you can see from the road. And if you can't see anything, far as I'm concerned, it's a moot point. But if you can see something, there might be some issues here. And that would be the funding that the highway department would get from the designation that we were, Niva was talking about previously. So I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to comment? The public hearing? Okay. And would you care to come front again? The Reagans? And we probably, I think we've got a fairly good understanding, but we probably have questions.
Okay, shoot away.
Okay. Do you have something, Mr. Troval, to add?
Yeah, Charlie Troval of North Shore Land Surveying. We helped Mr. Reagan with, you know, kind of do a survey of it, some topography stuff, help pick out a site and things like that. I guess I'm here to help answer any technical questions that may come up associated with this.
Okay. All right. And Keith, you were questioning the size.
Well, it's huge.
I know.
I mean, you know, and I, and I, 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 I questioned whether it's compatible with the county land use plan.
the county land use plan, with our long-term goals, with the issues raised by, uh, the, the Gunflint Trail historical people. Um, and, uh, my biggest problem is we talk about, you know, vegetative mitigation, but we've all seen what the fires could do along the trail. And that can go away in, in a blink of an eye. And then how much of you would see behind the rock cut would become a lot more important. Um, I mean, I've, I've worked at the end of the trail numerous times, worked on Poplar Lake numerous times, different projects. I've driven by there all seasons of the year. And, um, I just think it's, it's a, it's, it's, the, the quality of the building, I, it's, it's a steel warehouse-type building, which is kind of incompatible with the other structures along the trail. There's a few, like the, the fire station is kind of a Morton-style building, but that's a lot, lot, lot smaller. This is kind of a, a more of an industrial-looking building, which I think is totally out of character for a historic trail area. So I mean, I think those are all concerns that, you know.
Does anyone else from the commission have a question, statement?
I'm overwhelmed by the size of it.
I just have to say, I own a hu, a hundred by a hundred square foot pre-cast concrete building that's located on the Caribou Trail and no one has, most people don't even know it's there. And it's, it's possible, and I hear you, Keith.
Well, that old factory building is way back in the woods. I mean, it's.
It's about a block off the road.
Well, yeah.
And it's got a really nice curve in the road.
Yeah, but it was, it's been there for, what, almost forty years?
Seventy-six, nineteen seventy-six.
So I mean, it's not, the Caribou Trail is not the same as the Gunflint Trail. You know, it doesn't have the historical connotations. I mean, yeah, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a pretty drive-up, up, up, so it's not the same, Judy.
It is a, it's a, I think, one of the things I think we're dealing with is the applicant has, I'm, and I'm speaking for you, figuring out what his needs would be, and he's probably added another few square feet because he probably has other things he'd like to acquire. And by Cook County standards, that's a big building, you know? There's a quonset curved structure just up here, uh, about two blocks away from here in the middle of Grand Marais. That's, you know, the size is being a problem.
So, let's talk about that. Without, without a CUP, you would, you would, you could build a 3,000-square-foot building there, which would be sixty by fifty.
Point of order, I believe we're closed to the public and we're only for questions.
Right.
Okay, sorry.
Questions?
Yeah. I think for us to determine, you know, what his needs are, whether it's too big, I think really it's a matter of can this legit, legitimately built, be built without being visible from the Gunflint?
Right.
Um, that's, that's, that's the real question, I think. And, um, if I understood correctly from staff, whether, right now is our opportunity to put a, put any conditions on it. If, if they had a home on there already, they wouldn't need to come to us anyway to build this, so, um, I think trying to work with them might be a, a good opportunity to, to.
Yeah.
Provide buffer.
Yeah.
And so, that was my.
Well, and, you know, anybody with property along that road with a home on it can build, you know, and there's the funding gone.
Question from the staff. I thought we had a limit on the size of accessory buildings.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Cutler, uh, no.
Really? I thought there was a 3,000-square-foot limit.
Just a short, simple answer, no, there, we added in, and this is an addition from the early two, early to mid 2000s. Um, previous to that, we, we didn't have any limitations in terms of permitted versus conditional use in terms of size of structure. Um, I think what that went out in, in Holton is 10,000 square feet or so. We've got a pretty huge one out that way. But in any case, um, it is 100% correct that we have these thresholds of 1,000 square feet, 3,000 square feet, and it has to do with whether there's a home on the property or not. The intention was, is to not have somebody just get a, a residential piece of property and just put a shop on there and not, uh, not live there, but just have it as a staging area. But, uh, and so that the, the provision was put on there that if you have any kind of dwelling on it, the only limitation on the size of the structure is with the setbacks of the property and with impervious surface. And if you can meet those two and stay out of the wetlands and everything like that, then we actually as a county do not have, uh, a limitation on the size of the structure.
One of, I guess, uh, I guess I have a question for Mr. Troval is, um, without being on-site, it's, it's really hard, but you, you're the surveyor on-site of this, this is the, given the concern of the being visual to the Gunflint Trail, this is the best site for the building on the property?
It takes really good advantage of that big rock cliff that's there. I mean, you have, I don't remember, you know, I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but I mean, you have a, it's ten to twelve-foot vertical rock that's right outside the ditch line there, which helps shield, that would be more adjacent to the building. The driveway curves around, per, in a curved fashion, which was one of the things that was, you know, top of Mr. Reagan's list of things he wanted. You know, he, right from the start on this whole thing, he said he wanted a building that wasn't going to be visible from the road, you know? Um, I mean, you could, could have did a straight as an arrow driveway with it cleared, you know, but he, there's, we've tried our, you know, our best there with setback as far as it can before it gets into an area where we would run into different, you know, issues.
Madam Chair. I have a, I have a, an idea that was suggested by the other speaker. I think we don't have quite enough information here to make a decision tonight about the visual aspect. I would like to see the applicant do some kind of virtual, with a drawing, with actual surveying, showing the height and scope of the building and I'd, and bring it back before us so that we can, we can verify this, because it's a nebulous thing here. It's like the, like that, the speaker said, if you could go out there with some 22-foot high poles, and it would give us a better idea of how this would affect. So I would move that we would, we're still in beginning of March. There's, there's a long time before any construction can occur. That I move that we would table this and ask the, the applicant to come back, work with his architect or surveyor, and actual give us a, a visual idea of the rock formation and some footage from the highway showing, you know, whether it needed to be some poles stuck up in the ground, you know, something as simple as that. Uh, but some kind of visual representation of what this effect would be. And then in the ensuing months, hopefully as the snow recedes a little bit, maybe some of us board members.
I'll go up.
Could get up the trail. I'm, I'm generally familiar with the area, but, but, and get a better idea. So I would move that we would table this for one month.
Okay, so the motion's made.
I'll second it.
Okay.
I do.
Charlie had a comment.
Motion is made and seconded.
And we're, the commission is going to do the discussion. If they have questions, they'll ask you.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody else have comments?
Uh, I, I'm generally, I, I believe I support what, the way we're going here.
Yeah.
I just wanted to verify with Mr. Troval that, that he can, can come up with, with some visual representation.
Well, that's what I was trying to explain, is we have something like that. It just was something, once we realized these comments, that was done at the last minute, so we haven't had a chance to present it to you yet. But we do have that, you know, that kind of gives you an idea of how sightlines and stuff are going to work out there from the road to where the building is. Um, and I just don't know at this point, you know, since it wasn't part of the package that was turned in with the application because of, you know, once we started hearing the concerns, that's when we realized that this was something that we needed to address. So we have, you know, a sketch kind of that would probably hopefully help with that, but I don't know how we can, how we give that to you folks.
What I'm going to suggest is that if this is approved, we want the final dimensions with final elevations nailed down in a concrete way. We're not going to get into that. We've done it in the past, and I think we need to move away from that, where we approve things and with, I mean, everybody goes plus or minus six inches or, you know, whatever. But I mean, we want it pretty well, very well defined, because it will become, if, if it's approved, will become what you're allowed to do in the end. Okay? And so, um.
I'd like.
We have a motion.
Yep, we're still in discussion. I'd like to be assured and know that this is not a commercial operation for storage. What color it's going to be and anything else that would.
Those would be final conditions, Judy.
Right.
At the time we finally approve it. I've got a list of things as well.
Okay.
That I would have.
But those questions can be answered when they come back.
Well, they will be conditions that we can put on if we approve it.
Okay.
And, and, oh, I'm sorry.
I agree, but I believe it, right now, if we're going to table this, it, I think it's fair to the applicant to, to let them know what we're looking for.
Yeah.
So, so that they know exactly what to come back.
Yeah.
And what our real concerns are. So if, if we have concerns, I think, I, I believe it'd be fair to express those to them now.
Well, I hear some that I had. I mean, one thing was the concern that they would sublet part of the building or that there would be some commercial use, some storage by other private parties, not, not family members, uh, that are resident at the property at Voyager's Point. Uh, I mean, those are my issues, you know? And that this is, we're, that we're, we're concerned that we're not, uh, letting the camel's nose get under the tent here as far as commercial expansion.
Mm-hmm. That's one of my concerns.
I mean, those were the kinds of things that, I don't approve of the size of it, but I'm willing to look at a, a concrete dimensional look at this building, concept, and I mean with actual elevations that we can nail down. But when you come back, these conditions, whether, they, I may make them, but they may not be accepted by other board members, so.
Right. Does anybody else on the board have questions they want answered?
Actually, I think procedurally, since it's a motion to table, this discussion is not appropriate.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe.
All right. Well, you know the flavor of what we're thinking.
Well, I call the question, Madam.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So it's tabled. Come back with what we're looking for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
We'll take a real quick break between before starting the.
Do we have enough business to not just proceed and knock it out?
I just wanted to reach. Niva.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah.
Can I have like?
I need a break.
Two minutes.
I need a ten.
All right, the clock has started, Charlie. All right, I'm quick.
I might stroll. I need to stretch. I wanted to fill it in today.
How are you?
I'm good.
Emily, we've met many times in the past. We've been a part of our team.
It's been a long time since I was on. And I got, I got lured back in. Oh, yeah, probably that. I got lured back on. I don't know if I'll stay on. Good, how are you?
Good.
Just got a bunch of goats. How we could decide these issues.
We got a name of them now. I got. My boss, and we didn't know their. We're doing some legal work.
Hi.
Nikki, what's that? These will use.
No.
All the males will butcher.
That's out the window.
Now they call something practical difficulty.
Did you say dogs?
Which is a little.
No, goats.
It's still supposed to be connected with.
It goes, yes, that's a lot of goats. Especially if they're out there, that's overwhelming.
These things, they get strange because.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah. The people that do the big land use developments.
And are you still spying the dogs to go watch?
No, I haven't done that.
They go to the legislature.
And they get them to write the rules and make it easier for them to accomplish. This winter, they're not. No one wants to work for them. So, uh, no. I'm just racing. But I, I know what's happened down at Shogun. It's really a shame. I did the mail run this year. I got third in. But I don't think, I don't think they're coming back, do you?
Yeah, Matt was volunteering. That's how you go by in the radio.
It was a last-minute thing. One of my buddies needed a driver. His, uh, his driver got hurt, so in the middle of a race, he calls me up.
That's what you call them, the dogs, right?
No, it was the musher.
Okay.
It's his dogs.
Oh, so, okay. And do you train the short?
Right, yeah.
For the bearers.
I didn't run it that much this year. I've been too busy with work.
But I remember they created all kinds of lots up the frame we rode down.
Yeah. Yeah, good seeing you too.
See you later.
But it's late next Thursday. They're building the substation, I think 200 feet from the cell tower. The cell tower is going to be really far from the notice building, that substation.
So at Lake County, the planning commission meets at six o'clock all the time. So if I told them six o'clock, it is because my brain.
Yeah, and I mean, you know, I don't, the problem that Shogun has is.
Got himself a couple of times saying, hi, Niva, my.
You're too close to Lake Duluth and two herbivores. You know, I mean, it's kind of, it falls in that.
Well, we got around it, okay.
Well, then maybe you might see a lot. Well, see, the problem we have now is even if the population gets bigger, everybody buys stuff online. And, and people that are on a budget, you know, and it's hard to.
I've probably heard, you know. I was like, that wasn't any time.
You've got a nice face.
You've had quite an education tonight, haven't you?
I don't, it's the, you know. The size of it. The only question is, can it be seen? Yeah. Yeah, right, but they have them both starting at the same time. The head of residence, they're doing it anyhow. That kind of changed here.
I got too many people stalking.
Well, the only thing I have is that situation.
Bye, Bruce. We're back.
Were you set?
We are.
And all our members, yeah.
Okay, and I'll call the Board of Adjustment meeting, meeting to order for, uh, March 2022. I will undertake a motion for the approving the minutes and the agenda.
I'll approve the minutes and the agenda.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussions, corrections? Hearing none. I'll assume we're ready to vote. All in favor say, signify by a standing aye.
Aye.
Ours same sign. Okay, carried. Ongoing business continued. The, um, the Krause updated variance.
Yes.
Uh, okay, uh, Niva?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have anything to add, but in your packets are the information that's been submitted by Mr. Krause, and I think he's ready to give you some more detail.
Okay.
Okay, I'm Bill Krause, and it's my wife, Deborah Krause.
Okay.
All right. So this is continuation from two months ago.
Right.
Uh, we, it was asked to table this because, um, we wanted a, a better location for the garage, um, kind of replying to the Caribou Lake Association's comments. So what we did is, I, I found a location closer to the house on the existing driveway, so there'd be, there wouldn't be a secondary driveway. Um, I also rotated the garage so that it's, um, the narrower part is towards the lake, towards the lake, so it's, it's wider and a little less deep. And updated the package with that information, you know, kind of showing where it would be at. There's three fairly large but old trees that need to come down, so, you know, it's a lot less vegetation removal than I thought at first, when, you know, looking at it. So I'm real happy with this location. I think it meets the Caribou Lake owner's requirements, and we're asking you to, you know, give us a 35-foot setback from the center line of the road and 50 feet from the lake.
Okay. Are there any other people in the room that wish to comment on this? Seeing none and hearing none, I'm going to assume that that's a negative. I will now close the comments to the floor and will retreat to the board. Board members, comments?
Mr. Chair, I want to compliment the applicants for responding in a positive way to the request of the Lake Association and to suggestions that came from this table. And so I, I, it shows how, when there's cooperation on both sides, we can come to a better result for all parties concerned. And I will, when we're, when it's appropriate, I'll make a motion to approve.
Any other members? Charlie?
Did we, in our original packet, I don't, can't find it here, did we have any other proposed conditions that we were going to add to this? I'm, I am very comfortable with what was presented to us.
Was it earth tone colors or anything like that?
Yeah, he wanted to, you know, we're going to have it the same color as our cabin, which is brown, the same roof material, you know, everything's going to be the same way. Take out minimal vegetation.
Actually, the trees you're taking out, the power company will love it.
Yeah.
Because, and the one, you know, the one big tree that is in the area, that one area is, it's sad in a way, but it's, it's a mature tree, and you could come up with the proper storm and it could be, you know, it could be a mess, so. And you're actually going to have a better vegetation screening from the lake by moving it in this direction than where it was.
That is true, yes.
And did we get the height of the garage established?
I don't, I'm going to use, I apologize, I had a plan from the previous one, but it didn't really, it wasn't exactly this dimension, so I took the picture out.
It'll, it'll actually be a little less because the garage is narrower. You were, you're going to use a 412 pitch?
I was, I, what I'd like to do is, is match the pitch of the house so that the two buildings, because they're close together, kind of have some harmony in terms of how they look. And I think that's about.
That's quite a bit steeper.
And I'm not sure what.
When you say the house, you mean the shed roof on the, on the, the roadside?
Roadside, yeah.
Yeah. Well, that might not be much more than a 412.
As I'm thinking, it's about a 412, but I don't know exactly.
It's just that it goes up much higher, that it seems higher.
Yeah, yeah, it's much longer.
When I, when I did the site visit, I envisioned, you know, like an attached garage.
Right.
I'm pretty sure that's about a 412 pitch.
Right.
So actually, this would actually be a little lower because the building is a little narrower than your original suggestion.
Well, I'm going to keep the gable, I'm going to have the gable end facing the road.
Oh, okay.
Okay, and the garage door facing the road.
Well, then it, it's going to be maybe a foot or, foot or two higher, but not, not significantly.
No, I'm, I'm estimating 16 feet, something like that.
A 24-foot building would give you about a 14 and a half foot, something like that.
Okay, any other comments from board members?
Were we putting the condition on that it not be used as a, a place to bunkhouse or sleeping quarters, or being converted to another?
Do we, do we need that every time?
Another guest cabin?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Marchandbacher, the only real difficulty comes in enforcement of something like that, you know, it's difficult for us to, you know, it would have to come in under complaints and things like that.
But it's, it's an understanding between the applicant and the county that that's not going to happen. And when he sells it, and the next person comes along, thinks, oh, I've got extra room. It's in the variance not to be used for habitation.
Right. There, there won't be a septic to the, you know, or any water to the building.
Those go in. There's ways. I've seen it too many times.
When I got my building permit for my last garage, I was surprised to see that that was pro forma language in my, my, and that was in 2020, as part of the building permit. That language is, was included in, in the permit, built, actual building permit. And you will have to get a building permit for this.
Yes.
So it could, it would be addressed at that time, I think, yes.
I, I have no objection to that at all. We have no plans of sleeping in the garage.
I, I had no intention of having a bunkhouse. Actually, the view from my new garage, I get a better view of the lake superior than I do from my house. But it actually, I was surprised to see that in the building permit, Judy. It actually says, may not, no septic can be installed, and no, no habitation.
So when you sell the property, and the next guy comes and says, man, this is a great view.
Well, they would have to get a variance then or something for it.
How does that work, Tim?
They would have to get a permit.
They have to come in and get a septic permit?
If, if they put a septic capacity in there, or if they add a bedroom, if there's a bedroom being added that requires a permit, then by state law, they would have to get a septic permit. And then we have, yes, the distinction between accessory, inhabited accessory structures, being a bunkhouse or some other type of inhabitable accessory structure. It's not that thing as a shed or shop or uninhabitable accessory structure. It's just that the difficulty does come, if you, as you're saying, if you sell it three times over, then the new people over there, you know, they, they don't know. If they're converting interior space, it's very difficult for us to be able to.
Well, I have no objection to putting something like that on there, if you want to add it on, but I don't know if it needs it, but.
Well, I mean, that's why we're dealing with this, because there was a garage that was permitted by variance that was converted to a third bedroom before these folks arrived. Now they need a garage. So.
Fine.
Do you go back to the garage that was permitted, or do you put us restriction?
You want to add a condition? I, I would not object to that.
I do.
If you want to make the motion to, make the change, go ahead.
Do you have a comment? Oh, I guess I was, I'm remembering the conversation from, from a couple of months ago a little bit, but I'm also kind of wondering, ultimately, once, once the structure's there, what does it, if they put a septic in, what does it really matter to us to have a, have a, have a bedroom in there? Well, I mean, we really are looking at land use in the sense of the setbacks and the statics. I, I'm asking your opinions. I mean, I don't, I mean, we know we live in a county that there's not enough rooms for the people that are here.
Well, I, I think, Charlie, the thing that Judy's getting at is that, that the property is, is small.
This is.
That there's no place on it to really do something that really conforms without a variance. And the history was that somebody converted a garage into a bedroom. So if, if you want to put a, put a condition that says it may not be used for human, no sanitary sewer, human habitation, I, the applicants don't have a problem with it. Let's, we don't need to belabor this. Add it on as a condition, Judy.
I, I would, because the next thing you have is a guest house and more cars that are parking on the road.
I will make a motion to approve with the condition that, there will be a condition added to the variance, that there will be no human habitation and no septic and water in the structure. Neva?
Is there a second?
How about the conditions that were?
With the previous conditions, yeah. I assume those.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I wanted to go over the conditions that were in the staff report originally. That question came up. And then also, the Caribou Lake Homeowners Association had some comments about conditions that could be looked at. So I think now might be the right time. May I go through that? Okay. So there was four conditions that were listed in the staff report originally. So the first one was the property's septic system shall be repaired and conform with Minnesota State rules and Cook County septic system requirements. The second condition, the setback distance shall be established by the Board of Adjustment for both the lake setback and the road setback. In this case, on the sketch provided, I think that'd be 50 feet from Caribou Lake and 35 feet from the center line of the road. Condition number three was no vegetation shall be removed within the shore impact zone. That would be 50 feet from the lake, but in this case, that might need to be adjusted a little bit for building placement, which would lead then to condition number four, the only vegetation necessary, only vegetation removal necessary to facilitate demolition and/or construction shall be removed. Those were the four conditions that were recommended in the staff report. And then the Caribou Lake Property Owners Association, on top of wanting that alternative garage location, they had also requested attention to vegetative screening requirements, a condition of unobtrusive building color, and stormwater runoff management. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
So we add?
Okay.
Do you want to add the condition?
Yes.
No septic, no?
Right.
Well, with that being made, I will make a motion with those conditions to approve the variance.
Okay, motion's been made with the conditions attached to it. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further comments on the issue?
I mean, Mr. Chair, is that just with the four conditions that were in the staff report, or is that with any of the Caribou Lake Homeowners Association stuff?
With all that you mentioned.
And habitation thing, but, but the screening, the coloring, none of that?
They've already addressed, you know, the color, and the screening is already there, you know, so I mean, yeah, I mean, those conditions could all be, you know.
I think it should be said out loud, because, you know, they, they may need to sell it next year, the next guy wants pink.
My motion was with all the conditions of the staff, plus yours.
That's what I understood it to be.
But including the Caribou Lake Association.
All the conditions.
Well, that's different, because that was just, that was the Caribou Lake Association asked that you guys look at that stuff. That wasn't what was formerly in the staff report conditions.
I think they're a little superfluous, given the situation.
That would require some definition of what we would be requiring in those, would it not?
Vegetative screening could be us requesting a vegetative planting between the garage and the lake. It's not an unusual condition. It's something that I'm comfortable working with the applicant on. Neutral colors, you know, so it's not a bright red garage, it's brown or gray or green, something like that. Those are the type of conditions we're looking at.
Yeah, and they're already, the screening is there, because they're not going to remove any of the vegetation.
But keep in mind, the structure will be here for some time, so when they sell the property and somebody wants a nice lake view, these are conditions that stick with the structure.
Let's add them. I don't have a problem with adding all those conditions as well.
Okay, well, if, if they're not on there, and we've discussed.
Okay, well, I'll remake, may re, re.
Need the second to accept that.
Revise my motion, Mr. Chair. I want to revise my motion to include the, the considerations of the, submitted by the Lake Association.
Right.
And the consideration made by Board Member Marchandbacher about water and, and septic.
Okay, that, I think clarifies it.
Thank you.
Okay, you've got it, all right. It's been moved and seconded. The conditions have been stated. I think we're all clear on that now. Is there any further discussion?
Does Adam need to second the amendment?
I, yeah.
Yeah, that, it's been seconded, yeah. Okay. All right, hearing none, I'll assume we're ready to vote on this. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carried. You're free to go about the room.
Thank you very much.
I move we adjourn.
No, we can't, I feel we got more business.
Three more hours, man.
I still move we adjourn.
Okay, that's, going down there, there is.
Don't add any more conditions.
The, the, the new business was postponed, but there is a number B there, referring to Denny Fitzpatrick.
Wait, 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 wait. When was that postponed? The Miller variance?
Yep, that just came in yesterday. It was a pretty last minute item.
I didn't get a notice.
I think it was updated on, online.
Yeah, it was updated online, I saw it.
I didn't get a notice on my email, I don't.
I, I know, I was dealing with quite a flurry of other.
Okay, all right, well, that's fine, just so I know.
Yep.
Okay, just was left out of the loop. All right, that's fine.
Okay, go ahead.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe we got Denny on the line here, but I just wanted to give a really brief summary. There's going to be a request to waive the administrative subdivision fee, which is a $500 fee. Mr. Fitzpatrick just went the, through the variance process to get relief from the substandard lot size to realign the lot line between these two lots. This was seen as kind of a redundant fee, and as I was talking with him, we suggested that we bring this before you guys, see if you also view this a redundant fee, since this is really a correction of the 2008 variance that just wasn't recorded correctly. So with that, I'm going to double check that Denny is on the line here. Denny, are you on the line?
Taking a nap.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I recuse myself on the original issue, and I'll recuse myself on this issue, if we still have.
Denny, are you there?
The forum to conduct business.
I heard a beep earlier, but he doesn't technically have to be here for this, I don't think.
Am I there? Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
The existential.
Okay, good.
All right, you're on.
Okay. Hey, hi, thanks. I thought I'd request a waiver of the redundant $500 for a couple of reasons. I, I paid $300 years ago, and then I, another $300 recently for the reapplication. So I'm $600 in fees already, and being a senior on a fixed income, I thought I would request the waiver. But having said all that, I, I also want to not shortchange or nickel and dime the county. I, I actually like paying taxes, and I, I appreciate my county services, and I want all the county employees to make a living wage. So, the bottom line is, whatever you decide, I'll be okay with, but I just wanted to request a waiver, and thanks for your consideration.
Okay, thanks, Denny. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to waive it.
Motion's been made to waive the, the fee of $500. Is there a second? There's a second. There's a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll assume we're ready to vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Denny, you just made yourself a, a little bit more.
Thank you.
I will refund on all the taxes that you paid.
I was going to suggest you can make some donations.
I will make a motion to.
Okay, a motion to adjourn has been made, that's non-debatable. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Done.
Thanks, Denny.
Thank you to all, and a shout out to Neva, thanks so much.
You're welcome.